The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And we've consolidated in the past, we used to go through each of these items individually, but um we've streamlined things a little bit in terms of the consent agenda because all of these items are sent out in the packet. Everyone has been given an opportunity to read through them. And so normally the way that we start our meeting after I call it or after the chair calls it to order is to have one of the members of the trustees make a motion to approve the consent agenda. And then we will meet a second. And then we are open for discussion. So at this time.
I was so moved.
Okay. And you still have a second?
I see, I see.
But be- before we vote, can you um can you like hold up what I got that is this?
What you got that is this is ac- should be on your iPad.
Yeah.
Um you should have downloaded into Adobe Acrobat. And that's the meeting packet.
Right, I I think I have it, right?
Mm-hmm, you do.
And that's what we usually dove the weekend and read through.
So you're approving- You're approving the minutes and the financial reports and the directors' reports, all in one consent agenda.
And the minutes-
So so which one is uh which which one? Just-
And-
Um it's the one that says uh trustee pack. There she is. First there's a table of contents. Then there's agenda, which is you've got a paper copy of. And the next thing up is the minutes, which is part of this. Next thing is up is the financial report, which is part of all this. And then trailing after are the various directory reports. And as was mentioned, the the assumption is everybody gets it early enough that they have a chance to read it and identify if they've got questions, and I've got one.
Yes. So as soon as the as soon as it's seconded, which we gave-
It was second, Margery's second, so Ms. Cummins seconded it.
Okay. Announced discussion.
So now we have the floor open for discussion. Mr. Hall?
I was gonna- this is as much for myself as for our our new people. A critical part of the budget is how we're doing on that collection of things, books and the like, for which there is a state target.
Right.
And uh I couldn't quite see where that was, if it's on the budget.
It's it's not on the budget, I don't I don't believe. Um we go over it every um department head meeting and Lydia's Lydia hands out a materials expenditure report. And we are right on target. Um there are a few departments that are um that need to spend, but most everybody um is uh sorry, I'm looking at um. I think there was a time, John, when I used to put that on the budget.
I thought there was.
But what happened is um at some point in time, we decided that we we wanted to have a listing of every month and whatnot, and it ended up becoming too big of a-
It was too big, so we uh at one point last year, we asked to have it reduced so we could-
Yeah. Right. So now you get an incidentals-
Because you lost you lost the left side and you it it you couldn't read over what what it was.
Yeah. So um we we do track that every single month. Um we have to spend two hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year on materials. And we have a materials expenditure report, and I can put that in the packet next month, so you can see how that works. We every single um uh all the collection has several uh there's one selector for all these different lines. And um for instance, I have um the six hundreds and various other categories, and I have all fiction. And so we make sure that we are spending within what we have allocated. And if we haven't, there's usually a reason for it, and that might get in on uh July first of the next fiscal year. We will adjust it accordingly for the next year. So I'll I'll put that in the packet, so you can see that.
That'd be great.
Yep.
So Ms. O'Leary, um when you were looking at the warrant that we've circulated for signatures, this month's total was about sixteen thousand dollars. So if you were to take that and multiply that roughly by, you know, twelve months of the year, that puts us close to the two hundred thousand dollar mark, but there are other things that go into our materials such as paying for the Minuteman um system and stuff like that, that's part of the materials expenditure. So this is just kind of a ballpark figure that we spent this month towards getting us to that goal.
So I only got this a couple of days ago, and I really uh don't feel um knowledgeable. So I'm gonna abstain in on whatever vote is taken um and and you know, next next meeting, I may be I I will be studying this uh these kinds of materials.
What what I would suggest, and honestly, I think that those of us that have served multiple years on the board, um the first probably even couple years of your term is a lot of reading, a lot of listening, a lot of benefiting from the conversations around the table and asking questions um when uh sometimes outside of the meeting of Ms. Cannelli directly to say, look, I I'm still flustered by whatever. Um or talking to either the chair or the vice chair about things that are concerns that you haven't pieced together yet. But honestly, a lot of the first couple years is just absorbing the amount of different things that go into being a trustee. And so I would have you reconsider not voting for something that's simply approving the minutes because, you know, it-
Well, I I thought you said it's approving.
You're you're approving what's being reported, not an action.
Well-
So in that sense, um it not approving would be more on an exception basis. You found something that you you have you don't hear a good explanation of, and you don't want us to go down that road. But this is simply accepting reports, and I think that has a different standard.
If I I I've had I've had a few days, and I haven't had a chance to read this, I'll have to abstain.
Abstaining is perfectly fine.
Okay, yeah.
Um and next month, when I when we when I have the materials expenditure report that we usually use, I don't usually include it in the packet, um I'll explain at that time the requirement of the state has and everything.
Ms. Cummins? I just wanna ask a question. Is it usual to get this whole packet two days before the meeting?
On Saturday? Mm-hmm.
Ah.
Actually, years ago, we used to mail it, and it used to come in the mail on Monday.
Mm.
But now I usually send it on Saturday, so on a weekend.
I recall a few times when Tony's had to drop it off at my house, actually, because trying to get the last report in or so.
Yeah. Right, yeah. We had a couple of times when people did- Yeah, people bought it on Tuesday before the meeting. So it is met because the month the beginning of the month is so close to the beginning of the month and what your what all the reports are based on the month. So the month is done, the last day of the month. Then the staff has to get all their reports together. We have to get all the um all of the budget documents together, so it has to be done. You know, so it's it's done that first, the week before the meeting.
They have a quick turnaround.
Right.
If I thought abstaining would interfere with the progress of the issue or the matter before us, I'm you know, I'd reconsider, but I don't think it's sig- you know, significant.
Mr. Hall?
Uh one uh tip that I've found helps to make the budget go fast is there's a column here that has the percent expended through the year.
Column where?
Uh it's it's the second column after the big vertical black line on the first budget page.
It's on page six, I think.
So look at- Page- So look at page six of your packet.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh oh, yes.
And if you look at the bottom where there's the two yellow highlights.
Yeah.
I see it.
Um if you look to the right of the first yellow highlight, you'll see the percentage factor that Mr. Hall is referring to.
And to put that in context, this is nine months through a twelve-month year, so nine over twelve, seventy-five percent. And this is just about right on on track.
Okay, okay.
And you'll see the percent always at the top of the page, says seventy-five percent, and down at the bottom,
Okay.
the very end of the budget, it says seventy-four percent spent.
And then if you're interested in particular things, you can go through, um I find that in this one where the percent seem rather high,
Mm-hmm.
uh the amounts are actually fairly low. These are large percentage overages in relatively small budgets. So there's no problem in absorbing that from other budgets.
Okay.
Um but usually Cashman used to have a question or two about one of these lines each each month, and and there was always a good answer, but I wouldn't hesitate to ask questions if you've got questions.
And the other thing um to keep in mind is that the budget sheet itself is divided up into three different sections. If you look at it from that perspective, that the top is the salaries total.
Mm-hmm.
And so the salaries money is salaries money. And so sometimes we may end up with a situation where one of our employees is out for a a long-term illness or something along those lines. And so our part-time or our overtime, you know, the working of the different individuals may bump one of those items up higher than another item.
Mm-hmm.
But the bottom line salary total should be right around the percentage of the year that we have achieved.
Mm-hmm.
And the same thing is true with the incidentals, which is the big middle section here, is that some pieces are are smaller, as Mr. Hall was saying, like postage or some of them are a little bit more. But the bottom line of incidentals should be around the seventy-five percent right now, and it is.
And none of those amounts can be overspent by June thirtieth. None of the amounts in those big accounts can be overspent at all. Town, there's no way you can over- you're only given so much money, that's all you can spend.
So when you- So the salary total, the incidentals total, and the um building, maintenance, et cetera totals, we may have to augment by using our state aid or other aspects that are not strictly our municipal funding, which is what this report is talking about.
What you will see displayed to the right of the percent column is you can see where uh half a dozen different categories, which are described in just by themselves in pages that flow.
This is- So-
State aid, revolving fund, and so forth.
Uh-huh. Yes.
And you'll see at various points, money has been taken from those funds uh to cover some larger-than-expected expenses in certain areas. Many of the funds have restrictions on how they're used, um and so-
Right, which we is this this page here?
Still the same page.
Yeah.
Part of the re-
And and it you're looking at the six columns after the percentage column.
The bottom down here, over here.
Oh, over there.
And then the very last column is what you get when you take the city the town money that was spent and add in all the other money that was spent item by item.
That's our operating expenses.
Thank you.
Oh, it was beginning to make sense.
Very good, very good. We are happy to hear that.
I'll 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 vote. I just didn't have a clue.
No, there there are so many different numbers that looking at this is just kind of wow
But I don't-
until you start putting the pieces together.
Right.
And that that's what we'll be doing each month is-
Now the the next page is a drill down on that middle section, the incidentals.
Just the uh um on this one here?
The ne- no, next page after that, seven.
Page seven.
Yeah.
So as the title suggests, it's total incidental, so it's focusing on the non-salary.
Right, right.
That stuff.
Right.
Now you got a couple things here that you didn't get on the other. One is a month-by-month breakdown.
Yeah.
And the other is the thing I was asking Charlotte about earlier, which is materials. That's where where there's a state target. And you see several of the line items are considered relevant to its books, its microfilm, its videos, its material form. There are a lot of different forms of information available as services from the library. And the target from the state uh is set to include all of those. And I think you said two hundred and twenty thousand is the target we have this year.
But it doesn't include any of the expenditures uh for books or materials this month, so we're always one month behind.
Right. Plus, we usually end up spending money from those non-town accounts in order to make sure
At the end of the year.
we hit the target. And then hitting the target is very important because if you don't do that, you start losing access to inter-off inter-library loan and and that sort of thing.
State aid.
State aid, yeah, that's-
So, any questions on any of the other reports?
Can I just some- I think it's very important also that you go to the um to the orientation that they have for trustees at the li- at the Mass Library, this-
Ms. Cummins?
In Western?
Mm-hmm.
That's not the that's not the uh orientation.
Same group, different meaning.
Yeah, that's not the yeah, that's not the orientation. But there's a list of them, and uh I gave one to Dawn, and maybe she'll share with you that list of orientations. That's not that's not an orientation, I don't think.
I don't see it. Would you be willing to email that to both of them?
Yeah, you know, I'll talk to you both about it afterwards, but it's very important that you go to that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
And you might wanna go even to a couple of them, because it'll explain state aid and the grants and the different funds and the different acronyms. It'll explain all that to you, and it will make these meetings flow so much easier because you'll hear MLA, NELA, all these things.
Mm-hmm.
It just makes more sense.
Right, right.
So it's important.
This page is for something else, but it includes
Where I'll I'll vote.
Yeah, it's important that you yeah, go to those.
the date of the next trustee orientation meeting.
Oh, you have that right there.
It doesn't have a location, so I I would suggest Margery's
Yeah, those are always to be announced.
Yeah, okay.
I have that.
information would have been better for that.
All right.
They just sent it out at the end of March, I'll give you that.
Okay, so you'll send that to the two of them?
Sure, I'd be glad to.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
I did get your email, I just didn't see the- It was it was you had to scroll down.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So are there any other um questions or comments on the items in the consent agenda?
Did you have something?
I just wanted to say Charlotte very nicely handed out the trustee orientation with this packet of things that she sent out when you got the uh
The guide.
the guide. So study that also, because that has a lot of useful information to it. And uh and uh we're always referring to it, you know, when we have questions. I am anyways.
This one?
Yeah.
It's this one?
The trustee, the trustee trustee.
The trustee trustee.
Yeah.
Pocket guide. Try to peruse that and take a glance at it if you have questions when you're reading these things. It will help you to uh
Mm-hmm.
get get a handle on it, 'cause it's a lot of material at once. When you read the minutes, it looks like, well, that's not much, but it's all underneath. Minutes really don't seem like much. It's the reports.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Okay. Very good. Um so at this point, we'll take a vote on the consent agenda. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Welcome and invitation to speak. We don't have any visitors this evening, so um we do have our two new trustees. Congratulations.
Okay.
The warrant has already circulated for signatures. Correspondence, we have two important pieces of correspondence. The first one was actually cited in the uh the minutes or the the agenda, and that is a thank you from Ms. Pipes. I will circulate that around the table. The second is a very exciting piece of correspondence that just arrived. And it is a letter announcing that the Board of Library Commissioners that is pleased to issue a second and final state aid to the town of Norwood Library. And the second total will be seventeen thousand, six hundred, ninety dollars and fifty cents. And in the next few weeks, it should be in the account.
Yeah, it'll be wired in this week. Casey Casey will be watching for that. We often don't hear from the treasurer's office, but we we watch for it.
Thank you.
To show up in our accounts.
Now is is that something that um is like a grant, or how do you get-
It's called the state aid grant, and and part of part of um qualifying for that is the materials expenditure that we just talked about, making sure we've spent.
And do you apply for that, or?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Um it's uh done every October.
Every August.
Well, I send it in in August, it's due in October.
Okay.
And then um in November, they vote on the first libraries who um have been awarded the state aid um grant and also certification.
And it looks like from the letter that this second award is almost exactly the same size as the first award.
Yeah, it's a little a bit a little bit different, yeah. It's um it's it's holding steady at thir- under thirty-five thousand, which is five thousand dollars less than it was in two thousand nine
Mm.
when it was cut so drastically.
That's what it does, isn't it?
But every little bit counts.
Okay. Yes, it does, definitely. So moving on to old business. Update on the capital project and FY twenty twenty-two capital outlay request.
Um
Ms. Cummins, back to you.
Yes, thank you. Uh actually, yeah, Sarah, I get one of these too, so I'll just allow this.
Well, I was sh- letting everyone take a look, 'cause-
Do you want? Okay. Um so, has anybody seen our new chiller out back? It's beautiful. It hasn't started up yet, so um the fence will be going around it, the fence with the baffling will be going around it next, after all, the electrical and every other thing has been done.
Yeah.
I believe the fen- it will also be fenced on all four sides to keep the noise from the chiller bouncing off the granite.
Okay.
Um and that will be done, and we will be, looks like, you know, by about the second week of May, we will have air in my noise again.
That's a shame.
Oh.
It's mine.
Oh, it's that percent.
I'm sorry.
This one's mine.
I'll get one.
And perhaps it's appropriate to mention for our new people that there's a history here that we we had a running conflict with our neighbors that they thought the old system was too loud.
Oh, I've I've heard about it.
And and we're we appear to be right on the verge of finally putting that to bed.
Cool. We hope that uh all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed with this.
Indeed.
So you had um something in your packet, which was called the budget presentations, which is was requested by Tony, uh our general manager. And there are two nights of presentations. He will be presenting the presentations, even though we will be submitting them to him. Um every department. Um and he will also be presenting the capital outlay requests for twenty through t- for for um the next year, FY twenty. And I think he will present the entire plan, twenty through twenty um four or twenty twenty-four. Um the our plan, our first capital outlay request for twenty for FY twenty is going to be the LED lighting. Um so we will that's what will be presented, which I believe is about sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
LED lighting outside inside?
For in the library, to complete the LED lighting project in the library, which are all a lot of the ceiling lights, a lot of the s- lighting in the stacks. So we'll find out at town meeting if that's approved. Mr. Hall?
Are you going to be attending y- these meetings?
Yeah, to answer questions. Are you-
Any advantage you see in having any of us attend?
Um y- you do have the schedule in that document, and you could attend any of those. Yeah, as a town meeting member, I would think that you might want to.
I do. I'm I'm tentatively planning to attend.
I'm going to.
Right, yeah. So I mean, there are two nights. There are uh the were split up into two different uh and then capital outlay, I think, is another night.
Yeah, there there are a total of four nights, it looks like.
Is it four? Well, then there's a one o-
One is capital, and the other three are different groups of departments.
Different departments, yeah. So that was that was one of the documents. It's not in your packet. It was one of the documents I sent. Okay, so that's that's it for that?
Okay, very good. Mo is in the library, teen behavior?
Um children seem to be uh everyone seems to be behaving themselves in the teen and children's room this year.
Excellent. Always busy here. Plasniokas donation?
Well, you know, I sent you um the email that he decided that the um study space wasn't exactly in in uh in what he thought he was interested in after we, you know, um after I researched a little bit more. I've been going back and forth with him in the last couple weeks with Patty um Fanning, who knows him very well.
Mm.
And he's very interested in in digitizing a collection.
Okay.
Um he's very interested in possibly digitizing the vertical file that's in the reference room, all the drawers of photos and newspaper articles and and things.
Okay.
So we think that that's where we're gonna go. We're gonna have a meeting with Lydia, 'cause she's our digitization specialist in figuring out where that would go, what we would do. He was inter- we need a new microfilm reader um and printer. That is um the printer isn't working very well at all, and um it's really old and somewhat obsolete at this point. We can't even get parts to fix it. Um so we need to really think about what we might wanna do. As far as that's concerned, a lot of people use microfilm in this library. Um it should be digitized sometime in the future and done right, the way that we did the town reports.
Mm-hmm.
Um by either a company that knows how to include all the tags and everything else. But right now, we have them indexed, so you can actually look them up in the index, and you can see what you're looking at. These go back to the eighteen hundreds. So we're we're working on that, and um he'll work with us on that. We'll sit down and have a meeting uh with Patty Fanning, 'cause she knows a lot of the documents that are here, and um Paul, when he's in town, 'cause he, of course, lives in New Jersey.
Right.
So that's where we are on that. And I further down, John, I know you're interested in, you were interested in possibly talking with him, but he he's definitely not interested in the study space.
Okay.
So um i- is this the type of project that we would be seeking to hire an archivist, a Simmons grad student? What what type of individual?
We would probably wanna hire a professional, um and that would that might be what the money actually goes for, is the
Okay.
is the person who's actually getting everything ready to be digitized by possibly the Boston Public Library, the Digital Commonwealth, which was the grant that we had
Mm-hmm.
right, when we have a town reports done.
Okay.
So we're sort of in limbo with all of that right now. But we're we're still working on-
It sounds like you're making good progress.
Right. We we are making progress.
Very good, very good. Okay, pro- uh reports, personnel report update.
Well, I'm happy to say that staff is all the same as it's been for since last uh um whenever it was when Brian started back in October, so it's been great. And uh of course, Casey and Ryan hit the ground running, and that's just been um terrific. So um that's where we are with uh personnel. Um and we did meet with uh I told you, I think in the last um uh report last month, that we were meeting with the union, and we did meet with the union.
Okay.
Um and that is just sort of um I haven't heard back from the town council.
Okay.
Town council's handling it, a letter to the somebody.
It it's still circled and it's not dead.
Oh, no, no, not dead, no. But it's just it's taken, it's done.
Not dead is good.
Right.
And this is with respect to the new position?
Assistant director, right. Not a new posi- well, sorta new.
Well.
Transitioning.
Yes, tr- a transition, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That seemed a little unclear to me. What new position, what transitioning? What do we?
We um a few months ago, we were discussing using one of the positions that's in our flow chart that's currently unoccupied, which is an assistant director position. And so we've been working with town council and um HR and the um town manager
Twenty miso.
to flesh out what an appropriate description would be and how to put together this position. And it has been presented to um the staff association.
Well, it's union now.
Or staff union.
Yeah.
And so it's in the middle of the works, so we we will await additional information as it comes to us, but it's in the hands of town council at the moment.
Right.
Mr. Hall?
And an important part of the design was that whoever holds that position will also be holding one of the other department head positions. And a lot of thought went into whether that would overload somebody and who would be most qualified to do it and how to word it so it's flexible if there's a different person and with a different strength in the future. And that was where the, I think the union was most interested in is because it might change the um bargaining status for that employee.
Right. So we'll know more next month, and we can talk more about it next month.
And when you say the the staff union, is that only lover's staff, or is that town union, or what kind of?
They they are a um a a part of the AFSCME group with the town, but they're on their own local fourteen fifty-one. So um all the ins- the the AFSCME unions in the town are all different numbers. Um this is a change in the last year. It used to be a separate staff association for years, for over a half century.
Ah.
Um and now they're part of AFSCME, which is also so they're sort of a branch of the AFSCME group in town, but they're their own branch.
Okay, thank you.
And when it comes to um renegotiating contracts,
So.
we have a personnel subcommittee within our Board of Trustees that will work with town council- our board of trustees that will work with town council and the head of H R and Ms. Kenelly to figure out where the next contract will be heading and work on that negotiation. But it's not that, this is not that year.
Well, it is in the f- it started in the fall.
Next fall begins that year.
Yes.
And the union has a a steward in the library? A person in the library as a steward?
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm. There are two. There are two.
Do that does that change? Was that a permanent kind of?
No, it ch- well, it.
Is it elected or is it?
They elect. They elect. It could change every year, might not.
Okay.
I'm not really sure.
How often does it change, Tony?
Yes.
Fluid, okay.
D- yeah, you know, but when Michelle was in it was for years, yeah, it was for years.
It's fluid.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been it's been pretty much every two years for a while.
Take care of it after it is.
Okay.
But with the AFSME there might be in the bylaws, it might be that they have to vote every year. I'm not quite sure. I don't I'm not in the union, so I don't know.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Tony. Uh friends of the library, how are the friends doing this evening?
Good. Um I was happy to uh help represent the friends at Norwood one oh one last night. Um gave out a lot of magnets and uh membership applications, touted the um the book sale
Mm-hmm.
um along with Helen White. Um so that was that was fun. Um our book sale is uh May third, fourth and fifth. Um and in terms of the next meeting, um there's questionable when it's going to be. Um I think it.
I think the majority of you are re- are sure it's tomorrow night.
Are we? Yes. Yes.
There's a couple people who thought it was two weeks from now, so I don't really know what happened with that.
Okay.
And there's an event coming up. Is there an event coming up or oh no, Dan's been talking about that for June, yeah.
Yeah, yep. So as of right now, we're meeting at Napper Tandies tomorrow evening at seven thirty, so.
Right.
Excellent.
That's yeah.
Very good. The programming report, everybody received an entire packet about programming from last month?
Publicity report, yep, which talks about, which you know has flyers for every single one of its pr- our programs. Um it um it was a very, very successful Norwood one oh one. Patty uh Bailey deserves a tremendous amount of credit. Um the director of the Mansfield Public Library came up to to see to check it out and she was just amazed.
Check it out.
Um most of the people come at six, so.
Mm-hmm, or before.
Or before.
Or before.
So it was really crowded for about forty five minutes and then it started to slow down and um but it w- I there were I think there were
Okay.
I think there were close more than seventy five new residents here.
Very good.
Um maybe even more than that because we gave out sixty two bags.
Okay.
And um a lot of couples only took one bag.
Mm-hmm.
Um so um but people really appreciated feeling like somebody was welcoming them welcoming them to Norwood, so I think it was good.
Okay. When Ian said, I said, did you have fun upstairs? He goes, fun? I'll be telling my grandchildren about this.
Mister Hall?
Um I'm the president of the Friends of Norwood Center. We had a representative who was our downtown manager and I got this uh email from her this morning just over the moon at how great Norwood one oh one was and praising especially the the energy, the positive energy of the attendees.
It was really positive.
And they they really seem to have aspirations to do great things in the town and uh um feeling very good about the town and and I trace all that back to um the organization of it and the arrangements of it. Made people feel very, very welcome and and inspired, I think.
We had the friends and the Norwood bank and the registration table on the first floor this year, which took so there wasn't so much congestion upstairs. So it was not quite so crazy in the foyer. Um.
Got. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that was a nice, oh and.
But people didn't walk right by because it was so congested. They just went right upstairs without checking in.
Oh, really?
People would say, I'm not interested in that. No, I don't need to I don't either out. But just went upstairs because they didn't wanna wait.
So they didn't even take bags? So it's very possible we had at least a hundred people there, which was great.
No, they just, yeah, yeah.
Just when I when I came in, um there was like a bottleneck at the door. If the tables had been moved another ten feet, it might have been easier. But I had two suggestions. When I got here, the whole place, all the parking lots were taken, everyone, which is excellent.
Parking spaces, yeah.
But I was thinking that similar to what happens in downtown Norwood, if the people who were presenting or working here weren't parked in the parking lot, it might be a help.
Yep.
And the other thing that I suggested to Patty was that, you know how at the home show they give you a like a map of where everybody is?
Mm-hmm.
So that if you're only interested in fencing, you can find fencing.
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking something like that might be helpful.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But the but the town residents that I talked to, you know, who were manning the tables or walking around, and they weren't the newcomers, also were very excited about this and thought it was great and.
Mm-hmm. The town managers in the in the reading room, the D P W and everybody, yeah, everybody was a di- was incredible.
Yeah, yeah, the chief of police, the fire. Yeah.
Incredible energy. It was great. Of course Chief Brooks stays for the entire event, which is always wonderful, 'cause people are always surprised, you know, to come and meet the chief of police um new residents.
Oh yeah, and he was handing out his his trading cards too.
Yep, yeah.
Yep, very good.
We needed more cookies. That's the only idea.
Um I just wanted to compliment Ms. Cummings on her um she was welcoming people as they came in during registration.
She did it all three so far.
Um she had it down to a science. You won't there's there are people who were gonna wanna meet you saying this to the people attending, go upstairs, um maps, just did a great job.
Yeah, we gave out um new library cards and.
Yeah, they had great maps. They had maps, yeah.
Yeah, we did have.
Yeah, so. Well, you were showing people, you had a little map. Um also I one thing I noticed too being, you know, at the where people were coming in, it was
Yeah.
nice to see um um a range of, you know, you'd see like a young couple. And then you'd see, you'd see people of different fr- age different ages and if they're all new and moving into Norwood, it was just nice to see a
A real range, yeah.
a real range.
Yep, people interested in various things too, you know, um wanting to get involved in various.
Mm-hmm.
People declaring themselves, I'm a library person. I'm here to I am a library person. More than more than one person said that. I love libraries. That's why I'm here. It's great.
That's right. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, it was great.
Anyways, sorry.
Very good.
And we do have a new library card. Has anybody had the?
Oh.
It's a beautiful bl- uh new card. I wish I had.
Is that from your the book, the books from your shelf?
Yeah, yeah, and.
And Carla was also, before we get on the cloud, under the people.
Oh, yes, Carla. Carla Howard was. So you can. Um so that's one of our options. We now have four options and we now will put a new barcode on and your old barcode on a new card.
Oh, I know this.
Really?
So if you have a card you want to trade in, um we can do that.
You know, that's been what's holding me back, 'cause I have that memorized.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, and you have it, it's, you know, so many of your apps are, you know, you'd have to log everything in totally, you know.
Oh, that's true.
So I that's mine and I have my old number.
Very nice.
Which is great. Um so anyway, you can choose between four different cards now and you can trade your old card in if you'd like. We do destroy the old card. You can't keep it.
That is nice.
Because it has the number, but you can't have two cards. Although you can have a key card. Yeah, so you have to make a decision.
Think think hard.
Well, the challenge is that I stuck the Dick's Sporting Goods bonus thing on the other side of the library card, 'cause I'm never without the library card, so.
Well, you'll have to give some thought. Patty Fanning traded hers in last night and she had one of the very old cards.
Very good. Sounds like a lot of fun.
Okay. Yeah, it was great. It was really wonderful. Patty Bailey deserves tremendous amount of credit for having, you know, uh thought this up
She was, yeah, she absolutely.
and and brought it to uh to the point that it is now.
Very good. Miss Montgomery?
Do you ever like give an award for that? I mean, or give her a bouquet of flowers or something?
No, we haven't, because we we have a lot of heroes here that do various things in departments and we give, you know, we try to give credit where credit's due and
Okay. Okay.
seeing we I we used to have something called the Francis Fund Award that I used to give and we went through the entire staff, so maybe I should um institute that again.
Or employee of the month or something.
Yeah, yeah, it gets kinda people get, you know, whatever, okay.
That's a difficult one to do with a if you had twelve.
It's a difficult one.
If you had twelve members, that'd be an easy one. It's very difficult when you have so many.
Yeah, really. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. New business, exhibit policy update.
Right, so we this is around the time that we need to start doing, you know, uh cleaning house with our policies again. Um every year we try to do a couple of them and this is our exhibit policy. And we happen Casey and I happened to come across a um an interesting thing in this, like um old policy. We have the t- uh one that was approved in nineteen ninety, but it was um that was amended in ninety five and there was an update following the library res- uh renovation in two thousand and one and then I.
This is oh six.
Right, and then right, and then and then it was oh six it was approved um approved again.
Mm-hmm.
Um which was when Mary was here. There on the policy, it talks about available wall space, which is above where the fr- where the where the cases are.
Yep.
And I think when the the library was renovated in two thousand and one, they were possibly planning on putting on a um a painting, um you know, an art rail up there
Full to more. Mm-hmm.
and they never did.
Okay.
And somebody the other day wanted to use that. Um and we looked at the policy and we realized that it's in the policy, but there's no there's no rail.
No way you are.
Um so what we could do is look into putting a rail up.
Okay.
Um we have never seen, it's only thirty thirty inches, which is not huge.
Right.
You know, if.
Thirty inches wide or tall?
Tall. Sixteen feet by thirty inches. Um I don't know if we wanna strike that
Tall.
from the policy or if we want to put the chair rail up, but one or the other has to be done because if somebody asks, because it's in the policy, somebody asks to um use that space, we have to make it available and there's no way, we're not gonna put nails in the wall.
Right.
So that's why nobody's used it, I think, of uh for I never even noticed that it was in the, to be quite honest, in the policy. I just knew that we never ha- hung anything there.
Would you be willing to look into what the cost
Yep.
of putting such a a rail up would be and then we can revisit this at a future meeting?
The chair rail? Right, so what what I want you to do is just hang on to this um in your in your packet.
Yep.
Make sure you read it. I don't think there's anything else. Casey, there wasn't anything else in here. There was no other inconsistency, right?
Um there there's one that I wanted to ask about.
No.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
And that was that I'm not entirely clear on this but that the exhibits in the library may not promote any commercial interest.
Was this just?
And I think that some of our displays from certain groups may be a little bit more nudging the edge of that.
Right, they've been artistic.
Even if there are no prices placed on any items that it says um that materials from for-profit organizations will not be used and I'm not sure that we have
Right.
abided by that.
Right, the pottery uh co-op or whatever it is down down in Wolf Hall has used it ever, it was being used by the pottery co-op before I even got here.
Right. Right.
And they've continued to, I think, book it every single year since. And they do not put their prices in there. Um we don't allow that. Um.
So we may need to revisit that aspect of this policy.
Right, so you need to either, we need to make a decision of if we're gonna allow it or not.
Right.
And.
Well, we may not we may not need to decide it in real time. I can I can imagine
Mister Hall?
defining the conditions under which we would take something uh which might be what we're doing now, which is they are the source, but they're not able to do any selling.
Right, Cindy Rudolph had a display in there um of her calligraphy, of her artwork. It's lovely to see the art, you know. Other libraries have wonderful art space and we don't because of the fact that we don't have any walls for it, because it's all windows pretty much everywhere.
You could probably get an art display through the art association anytime you wanted to.
Windows doors. Right, but we don't have.
But Cindy has been a very active part of that in the past.
Right, we don't have the space for it. That's the thing. But we would if if we got the chair rail, we could have very small pieces up there.
Sure.
Um but then again, um you know, um it's it that's i- if people are making a profit off of it. But it's very, very common. I would say every art exhibit at all the other libraries um usually are for sale.
Usually free.
You know, the artist will sell it in with a with a um you can go to the front desk and get the price sheet on it, in other words, kind of thing.
Do you have a view on whether we should retain, modify or remove this provision?
Um well, we do, you know, we do allow all that art in the children's room to be put up. Um.
But the art in the children's room is mostly done by kids in the schools, so that's not.
Right, right, but we allow people to come in and hang it, so I think if we were to have the rail with the artwork, um I, you know, that wouldn't be a big problem, is what I'm saying.
Well, no, I I had understood his question to be about the commercial use.
W- but translating that into languages is not a simple matter, I which I think our discussion is making clear.
Right.
Um I would be interested in in a modification, something that uh was more flexible about who can use it, but more precise about how they can use it. Um.
It might also be important to put into that that not only does the library, you see that we have a paragraph on library precedence.
Mm-hmm.
We might have a paragraph on cultural nonprofit precedence, that if it's not being used, if 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 it's, you know, um if the display case is not used, then we would allow someone like the pottery cons- uh co-op
Mm-hmm.
or, you know, another artist in town to use it. Um did you Casey, what does the book look like right now? She's the keeper of the display.
What is the display case? Uh it's pretty open.
Yep.
I think we only have
People are not knocking themselves out getting more.
next month and then have a couple months for you.
Yeah, sometimes we we search for for um uh one month, we put the pop-up books.
Well.
I have a collection of pop-up books and Joanne Warren, we put pop-up books in there. We always try to keep it full and sometimes there's nobody who wants to exhibit.
Well, I I will also state as one of the individuals represented in a nonprofit that uses said space um that there are certain groups that try to take the same month each year.
Mm-hmm.
And when the leadership changes over between year to year, that they do not always request things in a timely manner and end up losing out on the month that they
Mm-hmm.
normally have. And that happened to multiple of us this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um so that that's another interesting piece to throw into the stewpot to figure out. You know, th- there are certain things that fit really well for certain months, such as March Women's History Month. And even though it is not always written into the book, who will have the display case in advance of the start of Women's History Month? Um that I I do know that Martha Collmaria expects that she will be able to
With the women.
do something for with the um dolls for Women's History Month, so I don't know, that's another one of those random things that
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
What is?
Well, I think if there's lots of competition in the future, um we maybe possibly we need to have, 'cause I know the Girl Scouts would always take precedence, I think, over a for-profit display of pottery.
Okay.
And so we somehow have to figure out. John, do you wanna work on that?
I I wouldn't mind, uh but I had a a semi-related question of my own, which Ms. Vega's talking about competition for the same month. I was interested in competition for the same event, like you get multiple people who wanna do a display for Black History Month and how do you decide among them? Now one way of doing that is chop up the month. It's a whole month. You can have one. But these are uh it's uh dealing with popularity, if you will, uh at a level that we haven't had to in the past. And I think that the policy is probably broad enough to allow that to be done with the authority you've got here. Um it's just that maybe the procedures um need to be tweaked and enhanced. Um you've got things in here, but you can't reserve more than a year in advance.
Mm-hmm.
But if you've got recurring events with with best sources, maybe you do a we contact them and and give them write a first refusal. Um and even if.
I can help you with part of that list.
Okay. Okay, this is helpful for Casey too, because she's been um, you know, fe- Okay this is helpful for Casey too because she's been um you know feeling some questions and there really I would say there are several months in a year when it when no one is coming in to do it and the library staff just sort of gets together and tries to put something together. So it would be great to kinda sit down and maybe reach out to some of our groups.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Um.
Nonprofits.
Yeah yeah and and the pottery I would have to reach out to um the pottery co-op and let them know that if somebody else takes it that they would be get they would have precedence.
Do you think if if the pottery co-op or a something similar to that we're going to donate you know we're going to sell our pottery this month for the art association or would there be an exception to that?
Yeah I I I d- I don't know I really don't.
We we hesitate on fundraisers within the library period unless they are to actually benefit
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well I didn't mean actually that they would do it in the library but that they would just s- I would like a little wiggle room for the pottery people. The library.
I think we need to think about this but that's why I put it in the packet um because we did notice this inconsistency the fact that we do not have a rail up there um and um maybe we should rethink some of this so um I think we need to
So let's put it on old business for next month.
on next old business yeah.
And you will look into the cost analysis on the rail.
Yep. Mr. Hall?
I had one thought for a type of event where we are running lean is um there are lots and lots of literary awards some broad and some by genre some by medium that drop at different points in the year.
Mm-hmm.
And if we know what is coming up at a month when we aren't quite sure what to do for an exhibit we could put an exhibit of that sort of thing from our collection.
Mm-hmm.
We have an excuse for doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
But that's also something we're putting one of our tabletop displays so that people actually check the stuff out maybe it's more useful.
Yeah it's behind the glass and yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Good point.
Um 'cause then it's stuck.
Um.
Yeah yeah yeah.
Right right.
Which is what I like about putting my Girl Scout display up there is that it is stuck and people can look and see and uh
Yeah it's locked up behind the glass right.
And not touch and take.
consult yeah not touch and take.
Okay I'm gonna put that we'll put that on the old business next month but you have the document here that you can and I and I
Okay.
and I've reformatted it to our new policy manual format and we'll just work on it from there.
Yeah. Okay very good thank you.
Okay.
Definitely a good one to visit. Um the Annette Weber Fund which is
Right so you read the letter I'm sure um and uh I felt that because we had received some significant donations once from her one from Annette Weber's son's law firm
Mm-hmm.
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 and um then five other donations to the um a hundred fifteen hundred dollars um that we should put that in a fund that can be used by the outreach department for their programming.
Excellent.
So they never have to worry about getting together with a senior center and having the money for um the bus trip or and it would be used over course of years like five or ten years and possibly we don't know if we'll be getting any more donations from.
Right.
Um so um I just thought that was a nice um honor for for um she was one of um our best you know
Thank you.
um most most um prolific readers twenty-five books a month they would they would deliver to her large print.
Uh.
Yeah I grew I grew up with the whole family regular family she was a sweetheart yeah and uh her son's a great guy too.
Did you?
Oh.
Very good.
Yeah she has three sons.
Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you John.
So um I talked to town the town treasurer um and he said that it would be great but he would like to have a um
Thank you. A motion.
a mo- a vote of the board to establish the fund and then I will go forward.
If there's someone that would like to make a motion.
Do you wanna vote?
Some vote.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to establish the Annette Weber Fund? Okay then we'll take a vote all in favor of establishing?
Hi.
Yeah.
Right.
Very good.
Okay.
Excellent that'll be a good tribute.
Where w- where will the money come from?
We already have several donations that were listed here um in honor of her since
The money.
Alright.
They've sent checks to the library.
Okay.
Okay.
It the the letter is right after the budget stuff in your packet.
It it's in it yes it's in it's in this.
Okay.
Okay.
Microphone reader. You need one.
Microphone reader printer okay we looked into this several years ago replacing it we actually had a benefactor but unfortunately as soon as we gave her the price she disappeared. Um it somewhere between depending on what we would get um and I would I would hesitate getting something used.
Right.
Um it's somewhere under ten thousand dollars. There's a lot to be I mean it's it's um it's going to be obsolete. People are not going to be putting things on microfilm but we have years of microfilm that we already have and it's used all the time.
Mm-hmm.
Boston Public Library has a great microfilm reader. Um what we want is one that will that you can put a flash drive in what we there are there's one that you could actually email this uh the scan to yourself but we don't have um access to a port in that area and so that would be some cabling that would have to be done which would be an extra expense.
Okay.
But if if it had a um if it accepted a flash drive you could download the files right onto a flash drive and not even have to print them in the library.
Okay.
Um but people do like to print them um and the printer is what's what's going bad on us right now and there's just um we need to we need to make a decision of whether we want to do to purchase um a new microfilm reader. And Mr. Pazniokis wasn't interested in um in that. Because he felt that it was gonna be obsolete at some point in time in the future. But other libraries do have them still and we're known for having one.
Okay.
So people actually.
He he actually said he would look to something and it was on there and he said he was pleased.
Um who did what?
I remember Mr. Pazniokis.
He he was looking for some documents.
Well he doesn't want something that would be obsolete.
Yeah.
But yeah.
He was pleased that the documents were there he was.
Yes oh yes yes Patty Fanning does a lot of research um on the mic and we index it every single um every single um
Okay.
Well we're not putting them on the microfilm anymore I don't think I think we're I'm not quite sure what we're doing with the new the news um newspapers now actually Lydia's in charge of that. Um so I'm not quite sure that we're indexing them um but in any event they're used all the time um.
How far back do you have Norwood newspapers?
They go back to the eighteen hundreds in in on the microphone. And we actually are looking into digitizing digitizing some um um some newspapers that Patty Fanning was given big huge journals of and that's another whole project that we've been talking about. Um so it's whether or not we wanna decide to do this and I actually have a document I mean that I handed out to you which is our special funds report so we can just we can I'm just gonna plant that sort of that bug in your ear about the microfilm reader and we can move on.
Alright.
Mm-hmm.
When I was in charge of the library at the National Fire Protection Association uh the subject of microfilming versus digitizing came up for action and uh the people who are looking to make more products and uses out of the material in favor of digitizing the people including our librarian who were concerned about preserving it with confidence for the longest period of time were solidly on microfilming side. I think we ended up doing a bit of both
Mm-hmm.
'cause we
Which is what we're doing.
'cause we had a lot of microfilm uses as we do here. Um I don't know whether the technology has shifted enough that that
Right.
Mm.
difference in preservation length is not as great as it used to be and uh.
Yeah. I don't know Mrs. Lydia's specialty.
Um But it seems to me that if we are the people who have things that are really old that need to be preserved and that tells me that um microfilm readers are never going to be obsolete as long as they are the one sure way of uh making use of things that are quite old um.
And it's standardized microfilm is standardized you know so somebody from another li- if another library has a collection but does not have a reader they could come here
Mm-hmm.
um you know to read which is what we're all about sharing our resources.
I guess in a roundabout way I'm saying that I would be very supportive of the idea of getting a new microphone reader.
Okay.
And keeping that capability going for the foreseeable future.
In terms of funding?
I would see that this would be a patron uh a patron service be part of patron services.
So we could use revolving fund.
I would think so yeah. Um but we have other requests so we need to take a look at everything um which is under me.
Okay. Okay.
We did have we um the disc cleaner we did have to replace because um our disc cleaner um was not functional hadn't been functional for about a month or two.
Mm-hmm.
And um April kept trying to fix it and it just wasn't working and it was just a mess. Um we use it all the time because our DVDs go out so much.
Right.
Um we were able to get a price um we were able to turn in the old machine um and get a new machine for for four thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we're paying for that from the revolving fund.
Okay.
And that should be right we have a purchase order for that and that should be going through.
Okay.
Um
Yeah.
we need a new water fountain. A a bubbler because our uh the one on this floor works.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
The one on the first floor in the back hallway is so old that there are no parts to fix it so when it totally goes
Okay.
that will be we don't know what we'll do. Now there is a water source there so we might be able to do something. But um what we thought we would do is um get not a bubbler because a lot of us don't like using
Mm-hmm.
that for sanitary reasons but uh water bottle fill up.
Water bottle filler.
Because people are f- filling up their water bottles from the um Poland Springs water bottle you know the big ones they're going in and filling up an entire water bottle and this way they would be using you know um they would be
Okay.
filling them up from there. And we got a price on I think um Jim was gonna have a price for me because they've repl- um our plumbing source has done one in town I think it's at the Civic.
Okay.
Um there was a choice of doing one with both the bubbler and the water um bottle filler but I think just the water bottle filler on the second floor.
I think it's less likely to make a mess.
Yes and it's gonna be somewhere around a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars.
Well it certainly looks like with the current state of the revolving fund and the fact that we don't want to
Yeah.
um push that bottom line up too much that these certainly are
Right.
reasonable expenses all three of them are reasonable expenses to pull from the revolving fund.
And I think so I I definitely
Pay your attention please the library's been closing at nine o'clock. If you have any material to check out you don't have a library card please come to the circulation desk give them time.
P patron services. The water bubbler might actually the water um might be able to come from equipment repair or the building maintenance um fund so I'll later I'll just look at those
Okay.
to see where we are 'cause we're hitting the the end of the year and we wanna make sure that you know we wanna make sure we have some money left if we need it. Now don't forget we've also we've committed to paying ten thousand dollars from state aid for the chiller.
Yeah. Yeah.
The extra money that um the bid came in twenty thousand high
Mm-hmm.
and the town
Split the difference.
Split the difference with us yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Well um what's the sh-
That'll that'll have to be done probably before July first.
Yeah air conditioning with the new device for air conditioning.
What? Oh.
Spectrum yeah.
So in in terms of the water fountain issue if we are going to be bringing someone in to re- replace the second floor bubbler with a water bottle filler um would you be willing to look into what the cost difference would be to have them do the first floor and the second floor at the same time? 'Cause it may save on your labor it may save on some of the expense of hauling somebody back in if we already know that the first floor unit
I'll talk to Jim about that.
is squeaking along right now.
Right right okay.
Um just a thought that each time you pull the guys in again to work on it it adds up.
He's getting those prices for me so I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's something to consider.
But I don't think we'll go with the the bubbler idea because it's kinda yeah we'll do the water bottle fill up.
No I'd I do. Very good.
Great okay good.
Okay. The study pods.
Study pods. You know we're we're probably a year away from actually being at the point where we would have our collection reeded enough on the second floor in order to um uh you know be able to house a study pod because we have to take out at least one roll of stacks.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um but I would really like to see us go forward with that hush meat um w- and it would be about fifteen thousand dollars and I would suggest that we
State aid?
that we use state aid for that um and and that's why I printed this special funds reports for you which we'll go over in a second.
Mm-hmm.
Which is about right now 'cause we just stopped.
Is that fifteen each or fifteen to two?
Fifteen each and they they have electricity in them they have air um it's not it's not a filtration system but
Yeah. You showed that that thing you showed us last time that same way.
Yes the hush meat yeah.
Right.
Um I think it's a great idea I think we need to move in that direction we have to think about maybe even you know a future maybe having two of them or maybe a single unit with one person being able to have a phone conversation in one and another one would be the two the meeting room thing.
That too.
So but we can we can look um at that. Um but so what I wanna bring you to here is a special funds report.
Okay.
Which shows you if you just look down the bottom starting in two thousand nine which is my first fiscal year. Um that that was our total special funds um and how we took some big hits back in two thousand sixteen and seventeen because we had some huge building issues we had to take care of. Um air conditioning with air temps and uh various other things. And at this point um both our state aid account and our revolving count are are just growing and I think I think we need to now that the town i- has really committed to to keeping our building in in shape and c- committed to our capital projects I think at this point we can look at um some of these items that we would never have been able to even think about before.
Okay.
Um some of that revolving fund will be spent on on materials.
Right.
Right um back in June.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then we'll start building but we'll be building it up again.
Right.
You know um it it's coming in. Um we had the highest month ever for passports it was thirty-five hundred dollars in in March.
Sweet. Well you also had passport day in March.
We also had passport day yes.
Very good.
But ev- if you look at your revolving accounts um sheet which is in here you'll see that um I mean it was it wasn't it wasn't double it was it was definitely a third higher than our other biggest month which was January.
Very good.
The people are really um getting to know the library as a a place to come for passports.
Okay um employee emergency manual.
Okay so um I am using a template that's on the MBLC website I went to a meeting and uh saw Framingham's emergency employee employee emergency manual it was just terrific we're gonna be using that template Carla's working with me um to put it together because it's it's um it's created in InDesign Adobe InDesign and she's going to be learning some of that software so we can make our own
Mm-hmm.
um and we're hoping to have something by July first.
Okay.
We also talked to the police de- about coming in and doing a training RAD which is rape assault defense I believe. Um and they cannot do it in one day so we cannot close for one day. Um and y- as you know it's really difficult because we have staff who work every night of the week
Yeah.
so to ha- even to have it at night it's gonna be a problem. It would be very difficult getting the staff to come in here on a Saturday um and we can't do it in one day. So Chief Brooks and I are working on something and they're thinking maybe they might be able to offer us an abbreviated version of that particular workshop. And then we're gonna be working on all the other aspects Marguerite that you talked about. But first of all I think the employee emergency manual which and Chief Brooks is gonna work with me in taking a look at
Thank you.
making sure that um it looks good to him so.
Good.
I've also the employee manual which has been in the works for a long we have a policy right now an employee manual that was approved in two thousand eight I believe. And there was um both uh town council um per- And there was um both uh town council um personnel um uh town council, which was Kevin Resnahan and Keir Wachterhauser. Neither of them thought that we needed an employee manual, even though I told them that I, you know, I kept insisting that we did. Um and um our new town council, Corey Higgins, is willing to work with me on getting a new employee manual together um to
Good.
for all of those items that are not in the staff contract.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm working on those and we hope to have both of those, y- you know, sometime uh the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Well, it definitely clarifies a lot of things, so.
Well, something came up the other day that isn't in the contract, I can't remember what it was, and we referred to the employee manual, um which is uh, you know, important, so.
It's a good Excellent.
Great.
Were there any search warrants?
S- there were not.
Excellent. Search warrants. W- Um many years ago
Well, it was it was the Patriot Act.
The Patriot Act, um
After nine eleven.
And all the homeland security um our esteemed director is not allowed to tell us if there were any search warrants, but I can ask
Right.
but if she says there were no search warrants, that fits the uh
Then we know there were no search warrants, but if I said yes, then you would know that there was a search warrant.
Or
So um uh that was that was um what they decided in two thousand one, it's been on the agenda ever since then, so we kind of inherited it.
Y- how did just search warrants come up in the business of running the library?
Um there were people within the government that came to libraries to look up peop- or to try to get access to people's research habits or other fact finding um because again, this is a public institution, it's open to the public, but we as a library also feel that people are entitled to
Their privacy.
their privacy. So it it's kind of one of those wishy-washy, if you were to go online and do a search regarding libraries and search warrants, you will find some very interesting situations and cases um.
So uh so the only way that they could get the information is to go to a judge and get a subpoena or a search warrant. That at that point, then the library has to comply.
Have you have had federal agents out here?
Who knows?
Oh, you can't answer that question?
Well, no, I can answer, yes. We have um a couple of years ago, um uh yeah, about four years ago, five years ago.
Do we have many bad guys in Norwood?
No, w- no, it wasn't it it wasn't anybody in Norwood, but we did, we were served, I was served with a subpoena twice, so.
Uh you know, taking books out. Do we have books on how to make a bomb?
Um
I mean
You know
Probably.
Probably, we may not have books, I mean I think that would be on the internet.
Not book.
The anarchist
They have internet access.
The anarchist cookbook.
What's that, yeah.
The anarchist cookbook is the classic in the field.
The anarchist Yeah, we may, I don't know if we actually have that, but um so anyway, so that's why we asked the question, that was um decided after two thousand one that there would be
Mm.
We maybe It could just be on the
that would be on the agenda every single month. Um were you here when that was decided, two thousand one? No.
Okay.
Two thousand two, I think, Patriot Act was probably two thousand two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um that was how that's that uh so it's on the agenda every month.
Very good. Um miscellaneous advisories.
I have none.
Public everything, right?
We'll cover everything.
Staff and public remarks, or book suggestions, Casey, Tony? Not tonight.
Casey?
I actually just started a new book today, um it was recommended by Kate Teague, our children's librarian, it's called uh The Brass Gosh, I don't have it with me, The City of Brass.
City of Brass, okay.
Um it's a fantasy trilogy, um they just issued the first uh the second book of it uh recently, and I'm reading the first book.
Who's the bio- who's the bio case?
Uh Chakravarti, I think is the last name, S.E. Chakravarti.
Okay.
Don't ask me to spell it, couldn't tell ya.
That was gonna be my next question.
It's about a
That's right, Kate's down, go ahead.
a healer in Cairo though, who is kind of a con artist, and in one of her dealings, she accidentally calls upon a demon.
Okay.
Um and it sounds as though it's gonna be a world a wor- worlds, but I just started it, so I'm pretty interested by it so far.
Okay.
It's it's C.H.A.K.R.A.B.O.R.T.Y.
Oh, you found it?
Yep. Ch- Chakrabarti.
Chakrabarti.
Okay.
And it's a trilogy, I I didn't I don't Kingdom of Copper is one of them.
That's the second one, the third one hasn't come out yet.
Third one hasn't.
Very good. Trustees' remarks, Mr. Hall.
Um I have a couple of uh news I did before my book. Um these are the pages on this upcoming um Massachusetts Library Trustee Institute, uh which I have registered for as a placeholder for our new trustees. Um Ms. O'Leary has already told me that she is registered. Um and if if you were interested, I would defer to you and let us have two new people go out.
It's in Worcester, right?
It's in Worcester and it's a whole day, county travel time, so it's, you know, I wanna make sure that you are free that day.
Okay. This Saturday. Right?
Not this Saturday, no, it's uh April twenty-seventh.
No, when is this?
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh?
Were you going to go to it, John, if I didn't?
Mm.
Um I was going to go to it if neither of you did, for sure. Um
They just came out and said that anybody's invited.
I think anybody can help.
Oh, I know, but I I I just felt like three librarians might be taxing the
No, they they opened it up, it was widely, a wide invitation.
I know, I saw it too.
Oh, yeah. I thought I was reading between the lines, you know.
Well, that's Mm-hmm. When John had registered, he wanted to make sure that there would be a spot
Mm-hmm.
at this conference so that at least one of you would be able to attend.
Mm, at that time, they owed him a lot of one per level.
So this was
Yeah, I heard you say that at the last meeting, so um unfortunately, this is not a good day for me.
Okay.
It's a Saturday and this is prom season, which is my busiest season of the year. And I work on Saturdays, so
Pay your attention please, the library is closing at nine o'clock. If you have any material to check out, please come to the circulation desk at this time. All public computers and printers begin shutting down ten minutes before close.
I could imagine a lot of excuses, that was not one that would ever cost my money. Okay, so it'll be the two of us that were registered and
Noticing he's not voluntary to take over for you.
I know, he could do the proms.
That you saw that, did you? Um the other point I wanted to bring up before my book was um has to do with the pajama drive, which
Oh, right.
there's been a lot of news about that. Um the selectmen have been nice enough to say that they're going to give a plaque to Gene and me for our contributions. And I I saw um Paul Bishop, and we talked about it a little bit. I think it's gonna be an opportunity to build some enthusiasm for next year. Maybe a postmortem, what we do right, what we do not so right. Uh certainly a chance to dr- shine a spotlight on other people who maybe didn't get as much public um um acclaim, and I was thinking of Kate and the people that Kate listed, yourself and Jim. Um I was thinking of giving a shout out to the schools collectively because they really rose and so getting everybody to feel good about themselves, to celebrate the achievement, which was considerable.
Didn't we win?
Perfect.
We didn't win because those crazy people at Bourne, you know, up their game by about a thousand
Crazy people. By a thousand, yeah.
Yeah, and and although everybody has been very careful to say, you know, that uh
Crazy.
I think they were talking to us, yeah, or something. I think they kind of talked to us, yeah.
that's not a bad outcome. Bourne and Norwood combined accounted for
Half.
almost half
Yeah.
of the entire
State.
state output, and that's that's remarkable.
Wow.
How many pajamas?
We had twenty five hundred.
Yep.
They had thirty three hundred, so it was about twelve thousand.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty three. Mm-hmm.
Almost twelve thousand.
Across the state.
Wow.
And the number three years ago was
Mm-hmm.
much less than that, 'cause we collected five hundred at the, well, maybe four hundred.
Third debt.
And Bourne was at not even two thousand, I don't think, that year, so it was probably the number across the state was probably four thousand, so it's a hundred.
Well, there was another town besides Bourne that was consistently running second for in the beginning, they weren't
I think it was Sandwich
Okay.
because they had a rivalry with them.
Yeah, so um and both of those towns had what we have never had, which is a a large educational institution like the Maritime Academy.
And they have the Alcest.
They're used to following orders and they they really turn out and and help. Um I when Tony Mizuko said what he was planning to accomplish, I thought he was insane. Uh then when I saw how things were coming in, I thought, oh, we might make it to fifteen hundred.
Cheers.
And then somebody said, well, we hit Tony's target of two thousand, I said, that's incredible, we hit twenty five hundred, that's beyond incredible.
Twenty five eighty-two?
Yeah, it's it's uh it really a terrific accomplishment. Um what I think uh people like Kate and Jim deserve a spotlight on is th- they helped us cope with success. You know, you you have to expand the infrastructure of every stage of the process. It's one thing to get a lot of people to bring pajamas in, it's another to get them together and get them to the ultimate destination. And uh I know some of the people before Kate really struggled with that on a smaller scale, but she was very, very good and she yields to no one in praising Jim for what he did to to make the make the cl- 'cause we didn't have somebody on staff who was doing the drop-offs, I think, in the previous year, so
Collect them.
There's a lot to celebrate, there are a lot of people who deserve to have their names mentioned, and I'm hoping it'll create enough enthusiasm that we'll be thinking now instead of putting it all together in the last few months as we did this past year, think what we can accomplish with twelve months of doing the right things at each stage. So that's my other news book, now onto books. This, I'm doing my tradition of donating the book that I am praising. The title is Homie Don't Play That. This is the history of the uh revolutionary TV series In Living Color. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that or with the Wayans Brothers who put it together. Uh but in the process of doing that, it has uh a lo- what I found fascinating information about what kind of comedy you're good at and whether that makes you a good batch for a show like this or not. The experiences of the Richard Pryor Show, which could have been revolutionary, but it but he quit the first show. You know, they had four in the can, so they aired them all, but it was a he had a real run in. Um it connections between this and Saturday Night Live, you know, the people coming from one to the other. Whole lot of fa- uh fascinating stuff and and a lot of it is cultural, the rise of rap music at the same time and how that more on it. So it was a slice of of entertainment that I don't normally see a lot, had a lot more character descriptions and uh cultural development descriptions than I expected. And so I think someone else might also find that interesting and pass that down to Charlotte, and she can decide whether to put it on the shelf or put it in the bin.
Okay.
No, we'll put it on the shelf.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good.
It's on, uh w- what is the tradition here? I
It's over.
What do you read?
It's up to you, you may share a book suggestion, um you may share a remark.
Okay, oh.
You may pass, uh it's
Very fluid.
Um I don't have the name of the book, um but I'm reading a mystery, um a Sherlock Holmes mystery, post Sherlock Holmes death, where the detective is his daughter. So and it's, that's all I can tell you. So it's a
That sounds a little like the Beekeeper's Apprentice series where um he's very, very old and he meets a young lady who's like a a young female Sherlock.
Yeah.
And they start working together and then they start dating and then they get married.
Well, the narrator is Watson's son, who is a doctor.
So it
Okay.
And then Watson, so he and his father um 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 are are joined by Sherlock Holmes daughter. And she doesn't know that who his her father is.
I've got the title to the movie, Holmes and Watson, The Next Generation.
Right, right.
Would you recognize the title if you heard it?
I might.
Okay, so there is an author, Leonard Goldberg
W- maybe.
who who wrote The Disappearance of Alistair Ainsworth, A Study in Treason, The Daughter of Sherlock Holmes, and Sherlock uh well, that looks like it's in another language. I'm gonna skip that one, um but this is what came up when I looked up Sherlock Holmes' daughter.
Yeah.
None of them sound familiar?
No.
Okay.
Where's the tribe?
But I'll come prepared next time with
Well, if you get home and find out what it is, you can feed it into
Yeah.
Can I can I tell me?
I tell me.
To Charlotte and Minnet's, 'cause I I would like to track that book down, that's
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, we'll figure it out.
Cool.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cummings.
First, I apologize for my goodness at saying that the minutes didn't mean that much, of course, they mean a lot. What it meant was, you won't be able to figure out them unless you take, have the time to read them. Yeah.
No, I understood, I am
Yeah, I didn't mean that, I was just
I but I understood, yeah.
I was just trying to cut to the chase a little bit, what, you need one, you need a hundred percent.
No, I and I understood what your meaning was, yeah.
Sorry, I I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't trying to be fl- 'cause uh you need both. But anyways, um I read um The Tattooist of Auschwitz and uh
Oh, that was so good.
Yeah, it was a a
I'm sorry, that what was?
Tattooist of Auschwitz.
Is it fiction or nonfiction?
Well, it's it's a historical fiction, you know, it's based on a on a m- on a man named, what is named, uh um Heather Moore. No, that's the name of the writer, uh Ludwig Sokoloff.
Mm.
And um I was thinking the whole time Sokoloff and law, but um you know, it reminds me of The Lilac Girls where you're just so grateful that it is a historical novel 'cause you know that some of the horror was left out of it. But it it is amazing that uh you know that uh some of, in the worst of circumstances, that the human spirit can find a reason to go on, find good, and he did, he found, well, I'm not gonna tell you, he he found good in people and he tried to help people. And it was an uplifting but very powerful and uh demoralizing and uplifting at the same time. It was a difficult read, but you just couldn't put it down to get you read it, you know, it was just And then I read uh The Man in the Cricket Hat by um, that was a, that was good to read after that, and that was by um oh uh Harry Dolman, he's a cute little mystery that I like to get into.
Very good.
Uplifting then, huh?
Yeah.
It was uplifting.
Um I'm reading
It's really
I'm reading Bad Blood, Secrets and Lies in Silicon Valley Startup.
Mm.
Which is fascinating, and there is a podcast
Pay your attention please, the library will be closing at nine o'clock. If you have any material to check out, please come to the circulation desk at this time. Thank you.
It started with uh HBO dropped a uh documentary a couple weeks ago called um The Inventor. Um it's about this woman named Elizabeth uh Holmes who um was nineteen years old when she dropped out of Stanford because she decided she was going to
Oh, oh, yes, oh, okay, I, yeah.
she wanted to invent a machine that um that tested bl- all tested blood from just a drop. And then the podcast apparently, I found out, because I I thought I found it fascinating, the podcast came out in January, it's called The Dropout. And um and then, this was the book that started it all, by John Kari- Kariu- Rue. And um she n- t- started the company in two thousand and two, and it wasn't until last year that they finally were able to uh to uh dismantle it and and the company went out, totally out of business. She built um millions of dollars out of um the Walmart family and George Schultz and Henry Kissinger and Betsy DeVos and all kinds of um all kinds of people because she was lying and saying her machine was um was working when it wasn't. And what she was doing, which I found fascinating, I kept reading to Jerry all kinds of excerpts from the book because it comes up over and over and over and over, she was using Siemens machines. They were
Horrible.
they were buying machines from companies that they knew had reputable blood tests um w- could be done on them, and they had those in the factory. And uh Wal- uh Walgreens invested um millions and they were opening up um clinics in all of their, in all of their Walgreens stores on the west, in Arizona and on the West Coast. They opened up forty-one and they were gonna open up, they were gonna do it worldwide, and after the forty-one, of course, they discovered that it was all just a big fraud, a big sham.
Mm-hmm.
It's fas- and they were gonna open up they were gonna do it worldwide and after the forty one, of course, they discovered that it was all just a big fraud, a big sham. It's fascinating.
Did you see it on TV?
I saw the documentary on HBO.
Yeah, right.
Right. And then the podcast is fascinating. Um and then the book is even is is better actually than those.
Okay.
But you can see how she was able to um uh these men were smitten by her. They were not they were not um scientist. Um George Schultz being Secretary of Defense and at the time Henry Kissinger.
May I have your attention please? The library is now closed. Have a good evening.
Okay, you're welcome. Um and uh so it's it was she just they were just uh she mesmerized them.
Very attractive.
She was very attractive. She had um she she just had this um demeanor that she was able to pull off for years.
But
She was on Forbes for being the youngest um billionaire.
Mm.
Female billionaire in history. So anybody it's it's a fascinating story. That's me.
Very good. Ms. Henry. Um I have to mention once again um The Devil in the White City. I ended up finishing it just recently. But um and I don't usually read nonfiction but I and I thought of you, Charlotte, because um the the you know, the chapters alternated between you know Burnham and Holmes and I didn't look ahead.
Yeah.
You didn't.
I didn't. I thought, no, I can't. So um
And the architectural history of Chicago, fascinating, you know.
Oh Yeah, and the landscape talking about landscape ar- ar- architecture. Um and then just then the uh chapters about Holmes. I mean, you just can't make this stuff up, I mean, he was just a it was just chill- it was just chilling. It was just chilling the things he did and that he got away with, you know, for quite a while and and just you know, just the the way he was described, you know, very you know, confident and calm and but 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 um went went outside the norms of the 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 of the times. Very I guess like a very touchy-feely kinda guy, you know. Um when that wasn't really uh you know, well, to this day not, you know, not uh not a
Yeah, when he was able to
Yeah.
Like other serial killers in the world.
Right, right. So anyways, it was just um a very good a very good story.
And that's gonna be a series. They were gonna do a movie with Leonardo DiCaprio. We bought the rights and now they're I think they're doing a they're gonna do a series.
Oh, really?
Um because it can fit it into one. I don't think that movie would do it justice, yeah.
Cool. No, no, no. Series, definitely.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So you guys are gonna wait until you can binge watch it?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Cause binge watching is so much fun.
D- to give you a sense of our fellow More Woodians, after you mentioned it last time, Deb.
Yep.
One of the next meetings I was at, I mentioned this book and the reaction was quickly, oh, that was a great book, that guy Holmes.
Mm-hmm.
They'd missed everything else in the book, but that was really memorable.
I I did get the rest, you know, but but he yeah.
Excuse me.
He was bad. Bad man.
Bad boy. You like those bad boys.
Not him.
Okay, Ms. Montgomery?
Um I'm reading The C- The Coddling of the American Mind and uh it's pretty interesting. It's ta- it's talking about uh this what they're calling the I I generation, the Internet generation, having to be safe. Um what doesn't kill you makes you weaker and all these uh there's three basic premises that the they're functioning on that have a lot of holes in them. And it's things like uh protesting at a college when someone wants to speak. You don't wanna hear anything that competes with your own opinion. And so you you make so much noise that the person withdraws or no one can see it or you chase them down. A lot of things like that and it's it's really interesting. It's very, you know, psychological, but it also is political, you know, because it talks about
Who's the author?
Oh, you had to ask me. I knew you would. It's two two authors.
Oh, uh what's the what's the What's the name of it again?
The Coddling of the American Mind. Uh there's two authors. One of one of them reads it and the other one of them's lawyer, I think, for a nonprofit and the other one is a psychologist and they talk about uh cognitive behavior therapy.
Greg Lukianoff and Jonathan Haidt, H A I D T.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Very good. Well, um because most of the people in my house have my email attached to their e- uh library cards these days 'cause they can't receive the awareness that their books are about to be due back to the library. I got one of those nifty little reminders telling me that an ebook that I had requested um had been checked out to me. But most of the time this is not to me. This is to someone else. Um so I pretty much ignored it. Fortunately, I went back to double check to see what was actually in the email and lo and behold, The Kingdom of the Blind by Louise Penny had been dropped into my Libby account and that was quite delightful
Oh. Mm.
because I'd been waiting to read this book and I refused to go out and buy this book.
Yeah.
Um so that was a a marvelous find. I did enjoy
You enjoyed it?
Um well, a- as much as you can enjoy her books, they they always have that twist to them.
Mm-hmm.
How long did you end up waiting for?
But I ended up waiting long enough that I did not actually remember that I was waiting for it. And then when it showed up and I actually looked inside the email to see that it was not in fact one of my daughter's books that had been automatically checked out, I went, oh, yeah. I think I might have checked it out or requested it in January and it is April that or I guess it was March that I I did uh get it.
Wow. Wow.
'Cause it was between last meeting and this meeting that I devoured it. It was quite delightful.
Hmm.
Um so that was good. And that wraps up all of our trustees' remarks, other than to say that our next meeting will be the second Tuesday of May, which is May
My birthday, fourteen.
Happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday.
Well, it's the fourteenth of May, so
Well, I'm saying happy birthday.
You can bring cake.
Yeah. What what type of cake do you prefer?
Whatever. Whatever, anything.
Whatever, you're not a chocolate or cheesecake.
Blackwood cheesecake. Mm.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
You uh had said in your report that you brought a pie in on Pie Day.
Yeah.
Three
I bought it in Humble Hum- Humble Pe- Humble Pie.
A cannoli for a cannoli.
Cannoli. And and I wanted to know if you'd served it at one fifty nine because that's the next three digits.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I put it upstairs first thing in the morning. It was frozen. It had to defrost but
I set my alarm for one fifty nine just to make sure.
Yeah.
That's that's my math major friend.
That's your math major friend must be embraced. Um however, it is time for someone
Moving adjourned.
to move freely adjourned.
Second.
And for someone second, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good.
Okay, so Leah and uh Joanna, I resent it to you in an easier form to me and it has the places where the orientation takes place.
And now we should make sure that they're turned off. Okay. Okay.
I just sent it to you.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, when you get your minutes the next time, uh my phone number is on this list here. Next time you get the minutes will come first.
Well, you're here.
No, this is me.
Now, this is your
Oh, you're
Oh, okay. Leah, I have my
Yeah.
Next time you'll get the minutes. They'll come first because they have to be approved um first. So they come about four or five days at a time.
Brian said he had one for Leah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then the minutes come about two or three days later. The minutes take a long time to
Okay.
It's about fifty pages. Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what you had last night.
And when you know
Just remember to bring your name text back.
There's a lot of there's a lot of stuff you don't understand so you're like, oh my god.
Okay.
Right, also I'm trying to learn, right. I'm not good with
You like your hair?
Well, if you want to meet with me and and have a
Oh.
I just wake up like that.